We were all here for four hours last night, so let's have no whinging, please. Good evening everyone. My speech is unclear, I lost a tooth this morning, so you can all say ah. So I will mumble my way through the preamble. I welcome colleagues, council and members of the public, don't see any person listening in. There's no practice evacuation plan for this evening, so if alarms go off, it is for real. And we will evacuate town hall by going down the main staircase and the back staircase to High Street or Manor Street, whichever appropriate. Meeting is being broadcast live over the internet on the council's website and will be available to listen to afterwards. Discreet use of mobile phones and other devices is welcome, but you're requested to put them on silent and not use voice and camera flash functions. We'll have a break at seven thirty and every ninety minutes thereafter, if we're going that long. Introductions, I'm Dennis Willits, councillor for Leicestershire and Brayswick and chairman of the panel. On my right.
Richard Block, senior team support for the panel.
Mel Rundr, safety and protection manager.
Robert Carmichael, democratic services officer.
Karen Paton, housing strategy coordinator.
Matthew Brown, economic regeneration manager.
Lindsay Barker, executive director, place.
Sam McClain, Newtown Christchurch, subbing for Mike Lind.
Lim Barton, Trubend Ward, subbing for councillor Paul Smith.
Councillor Sam McCarthy, presenting Trubend Ward.
Darius Lawes, councillor for Rural Ward North.
He scored his old he five in Roche.
Yeah, councillor Sue Liston, pretty good.
Thank you, that also deals with item two substitutions. Urgent items, there are none, declarations of interest. If any come to mind. South Mount as we go along, minutes of the previous meeting, is it your agreement that we sign us correct the minutes of October? Thank you.
So I have raised before, but there was just an issue that I had with them, that it's saying a member of the committee rather than particular, particular named members, so I have asked that that be looked into and reinstated, please.
Sometimes we get members being named associated with Mark, sometimes they're not, should be a standard approach. Same for everyone. Have your say. We have no general have your say. And we have councillor William Sonnix on the town deal and councillor Scott Bootell on family local affiliations. Item seven decisions taken under special urgency provisions, there are none. Item nine cabinet or portfolio holder decisions called in for review, there are none. Item nine, items requested by members of the panel and other members. There are two two items consideration this evening, which you'll find on page nineteen. Both these arrive, as chairman of this panel, I have a regular meeting with the chief executive officer of the borough. And both these items arise from discussions with the chief executive. So the first one is city status. We know that our city status is one of the big projects of the council. And it is being structured very much along the lines of the town deal that we have, an overarching project, which sort of sets out the strategy in the areas in which advantage can be taken of city status. And then it's expected that there will be eight or so individual projects within that programme. And I'm proposing that we have a sort of light scrutiny of the city status programme at the point where the strategy is clear. And perhaps the projects are just in outline without full business cases being shown. Expect the city status report to be ready around December time. So the earliest this could be on our agenda would be January or later in the civic year. Are there any comments, discussions about whether this should be included on the work programme? Is it agreed that we include in the work programme? Thank you. The second issue concerns the One Colchester partnership. The scrutiny panel looked at a single aspect of the One Colchester partnership back in in spring. When the One Colchester partnership subsumed the Safer Colchester partnership responsibilities and set up a subgroup to deal with it. And we scrutinised the way that was going to be done to ensure that the requirements, the full requirements of the Safer Colchester partnership, which we were scrutinising last night as a different committee, were properly embedded and complied with the relevant legislation and that was done in the fifteenth of March. However, we noted that the One Colchester partnership is taking on considerable responsibility in regard to the delivery of the Borough Council's programmes. And so the proposal is that we we have a scrutiny of One Colchester partnership to to see how it is operating. All these matrix projects where there are lots of partners, always very difficult to understand whether they are effective and efficient. They appear to be so, but I think it's wise for the scrutiny panel to to get greater soundings and assure itself that the One Colchester partnership is working at peak performance. So that's the second item for the agenda. I think that can be slotted in at almost any time, it's not a particularly difficult review to carry out. So is it your agreement that we include that at the work programme at a suitable point? The exact timing of both those items will depend upon when officers' reports are available and when officers are available to speak to their report and ask questions at the panel meetings. So that will very much be down to to Robin Owen to fit it in at a suitable date. And we may well get your advice on that when we get to the work programme.
Sorry Chair, could I just confirm that that was agreed by the committee?
Yeah, it was agreed by the committee.
Thanks.
Now, at the last council meeting, there was a question to me about a work item which which one of the councillors asked, could it be included on the programme? I think my reply was we would welcome it, but the procedure is that a precisie of what is required needs to be circulated. Supplied to the committee clerk and circulated to the members so that we can think about it. Did that actually happen?
No Chair, I can confirm from my conversations with the usual officer Owen, how that the councillor in question will be supplying that to a further meeting and it will be coming to this committee at a later date.
Thank you, so we will have yet another work item coming before us at the next meeting. That takes us on to item ten. Update on the town deal projects. These have been scrutinised on several occasions in the past, because again, this is one of the flagship projects of the borough. And we agreed at the last scrutiny that every six months or whenever there's interesting developments, we would bring the matter back to the scrutiny committee for a short report to give members the opportunity to examine progress and to comment on whether the projects were proceeding at the speed we believe they would be moving at and whether there were any other difficulties. So this is what happens today. David, are you supporting us on this issue or are you just listening? Okay, so team, team, we're in your hands to hear how this project is going. Yes, sorry. Councillor Sonics, do you wish to speak before we have the officers' report or after? Your privilege. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much members and thank you for inviting us in this evening as the town deal programme owner for the council. I'm delighted to come and give you an update and an overview of where we are with our town deal programme. So to quick recap, you have a lot of information in the report as well, but we have fourteen projects in our town investment plan. Eight of them are led by partner organisations, but the council retains the oversight and is accountable body for the whole programme. All of our projects have clear governance in place, engagement plans and the levelling engagement across the projects is very good, in some cases really good. You've probably had the opportunity to have a look at what's going on at Jumbo as part of their engagement. So just a quick update on where we are, so we submitted our business cases required in March twenty twenty two to Deluck. And approval was given to us to proceed in accordance with those business cases on the twelfth of August twenty twenty two. And that was good news because that meant they released also our first tranche of funding, which was just under six million, together with our initial feasibility funding that we received. So that was really helpful, that enables us to progress as necessary over the coming year. And currently overall progress against our rag approach is good. So we sit at an amber rating at the moment, but that's because we still have several of our projects that are just working through the detailed feasibility. Some of them are very complex, I can imagine you understand with projects, the scale of the Heart of Greenstead project, there's still a lot of work to go through there. But I'll give you an update on progress across all of the fourteen projects in a moment. We have identified, as you would expect us to, issues and risks. We identified known ones prior to business case submission, but we review and work through the the issues and risks on a continual basis. And there will be no surprises to you to understand that the main one is escalating costs of some of our projects, which is largely due to increasing materials and the cost of labour. And also we have experienced some delays on projects that are actually on the ground or about to be on the ground for long lead in time for some materials and some supplies that probably not many months ago, we would not have expected. So it's quite an unusual market out there. And Matthew, my colleague, will just go through in a bit more detail because I think those are the areas you're going to want to understand. How are we managing some of those, particularly the cost issues to the overall programme? What's the approach, given that some of them are quite significant? We also, one of our current risks as well is the land and asset acquisition for the Heart of Greenstead project. We have ongoing conversations with the particular registered social landlord provider there that we are seeking to obtain asset and land for the whole of the Heart of Greenstead project. And again, that is still being managed actively. And I don't have any live update on that because there are key discussions happening Thursday this week between the Heart of Greenstead board and also final discussions with Notting Hill Genesis. But just to say, that's a risk we're very aware of and we're already looking at mitigation approach. Should we need to take a slightly different approach to phasing on that project while we carry on seeking ways to acquire that land? So we've taken an approach on risk mitigation that mainly we would like to contain any cost issues within the overall programme. So that might be slightly refining the scale of the projects or looking at where there are alignment across projects, which mean that they can be delivered differently and deliver some cost efficiencies. We have agreed some Colchester Borough Council contribution from the capital programme largely towards one of the accelerated projects for St Nicholas Square, but also for the digital working hub on Queen Street. So that project, the town deal funding for that is mainly for the fit out, it's not for the build. The build is being funded by a grant from the South East LEP. But that we've had, we've already had some contribution from the capital programme agreed because demolition and archaeology costs rose there unexpectedly. And we have also, as I said, been looking at phasing mitigation. So we bring forward the Heart of Greenstead in a whole way, but in a sensible way, so we don't hold up delivery on some of the key elements of that. So to reassure you, oversight on the town deal programme is strong. And it's coordinated by a very capable programme team. For every project, we have a clear project owner and project manager. And that's Colchester Borough Council project owner as well as for those projects where they are run and manage our partners. So we still have oversight from the council side as well. And they're brought together under five work stream leads and we have a senior manager running each of those work streams. The oversight, as I said, is very strong. They report into an operational programme board, we had one today where we go through the whole programme thoroughly with all of the programme leads to discuss the risks and opportunities to try and address those between us, but also to mark progress and make sure we don't miss the good stuff that's happening too. Then we report into the town deal board, there's a town deal board meeting next week where they will get a comprehensive update of the programme and the current risks. And throughout that process, we have our section one five one office servicing the financials at all stages. And we also have to give regular returns into the department for levelling up. And they are six monthly, they are also very comprehensive returns that we have to supply back quite understandably because they're providing significant amounts of funding to us and the next one is due in December twenty twenty two. So as I said, the overall current programme rating is amber. Just while we're working through all the issues and risks that we've identified at the moment, but nothing significant that we see that would cause us to change that in the wrong direction over the coming weeks and months. So just in brief, I thought I'd give you a quick canter through what I think is going to be a very exciting twenty twenty three. So terms of the accelerated schemes, you'll know Balkan Gate around the Mercury Theatre is completed. And St Nix is due to start on site in January twenty three. The time scales around that meant we really didn't want to start that project in the middle of the Christmas run up. So it was felt sensible to hold that now, given some of the delays until post Christmas. Also due to start in twenty twenty three, we have the Pedal Power launch in spring twenty three. So they've already got some higher bikes that they're working with their colleagues in tendering on, but the our own bikes will be purchased and ready for our residents in Greenstead to use from spring twenty three. The digital skills hub at the Wilson Marriage Adult Learning Centre should also be complete by spring twenty twenty three, which is another extremely important element in our kind of desire to tackle the skills challenges in Colchester. It's a really, really important project that at the Wilson Marriage. And the youth facilities upgrade, which is part of the overall youth facilities package in Stanway and Highwoods are planned for the Easter holidays twenty twenty three. We can only do that work in holidays, so the next significant holiday to avoid Christmas is Easter. We've done structural service on both of those buildings and there's no reason now why we can't carry on with those upgrades. So that's also very exciting. The Colchester Townhouse building work will start in March twenty three. And that's due to complete in March twenty four. So again, quite considerable amount of work on site for the town house during the next year. And the Essex County Hospital site where the town deal contribution is towards the public realm to ensure the public realm is available for the surrounding community as well as incoming residents on that new housing site. The tender for that public realm work is complete, it needed to fit in the overall programme of works. I know we've had some fun going up there looking at the archaeology, which is amazing on that site. But they are progressing well with the build out of that site and public realm works are due to start on site also in January twenty twenty three. So you can see an awful lot is planned and coming up, which is all on track according to our timelines that we had and our requirement to spend by Deluck. The key milestones and progress, I'll just finish with these Chair, if that's okay, and then I'll hand over to Matthew for a bit more detailed overview on risks and costs. So the Heart of Greenstead project, I think it's important to note the level of work that's been put in to ensure there's community engagement and wider support. So we also have alliance partners firmly involved in that. And our new alliance director is chairing the board at the Heart of Greenstead. And it's progressing well. So the focus is on the first stage of the Community Health and Wellbeing Hub, which will include the relocation of Hawthorn Surgery. And we're delighted that the Hawthorn Surgery relocation has already passed through its outline business case stage, which knowing how health processes work, that's already quite an achievement. So really pleased that that project is progressing well. And that Health and Wellbeing Hub is at the moment on track for delivery by twenty twenty six. So it's one of the longer term projects because of the scale of it in the programme. Jumbo, so we're all very keen and interested to know where Jumbo is at. And North Essex Heritage are making great progress with their plans for Jumbo and they have passed the first stage application, so the expression of interest application stage with the Heritage Lottery Fund. So that's brilliant news, they're through the first stage through the gate and they're now proceeding to full application stage and to secure the majority of their funding. So the town deal funding for that is to support them with urgent repairs and help them with the feasibility work to get that H F Heritage Lottery Fund, sorry, shouldn't use acronyms, Heritage Lottery Fund application in. So that's brilliant news. We are working with them because they're keen to take a bit more of the public realm around Jumbo to ensure that they get better access to the building and that the site works better for their proposals. And that's already part of the Balkan Gate two scheme that's part of the town deal. So we're working closely with North Essex Heritage to see how we can maximise both of those projects for everyone's benefit. Holy Trinity Church, which will become a community hub. Urgent repairs works that were identified have been commissioned, they're fully funded, they are either underway or about to be underway. I'm going to have a look today whether they'd start, but they are about to be underway and they're due to complete the end of December, early January. So that's really good news for us. And that then paves the way for what is also a Heritage Lottery Fund application process for that listed building. And because we have Jumbo in and because we also have the museum service in, that one is being staggered. So we don't want that to go at the same time, we need to make sure we can pitch into each round with our strongest hand. So that will come forward after after those repairs have been completed. And finally, for the cycling and walking enthusiasts among us, there's really good progress on what's cycling as Elsie Whip four, which is the local cycling and walking infrastructure plan route number four. But importantly for us, it's that connection between the town centre, Greenstead and then on to the university. So a really important cycle route that's being delivered through the town deal. First, good news on that one is that we secure with the support of our colleagues in Essex County Council, the Active Travel Fund three contribution, I think we got one of the only contributions in Essex that came to us towards that scheme. So we can do the full route, which is to the highest standards, which is really good news for all of us. So good progress is being made on design of that. And the first phase of that, which will start at East Hill, the engagement on that is about to start so that we can and get a really good understanding of how to make that first phase work, which is what the Active Travel Fund contribution will be funding. And then further phases of that route will come forward. It's a long route, as it develops, they'll deliver it in phases. So I hope you can see there's great progress being made. It's always difficult until you get the agreement of the funding to really get mobilisation started, but we will expect to see a lot of activity and a lot of opportunities for us to go and visit some of these projects and see what they can really deliver for Colchester. So I'll just hand over to Matthew now just to do a couple of slides, a couple of points on the detailed costs and risks, if that's okay Chair.
Thank you, Lindsay, thank you. Richard, could I have my slide please? Thank you. Thank you very much. So I'll just be very brief on this slide and move into the next promptly. So Lindsay's gone through quite a lot of the detail of, you know, what's happening with each project. Some of the, some of the sort of really strong ones are going really fast and then some of the ones that are taking a bit longer to get into full delivery. All I want to do is just bring a bit more context to how we're going about dealing with cost inflation and how we're coming into the challenges that are inevitable when you get into the delivery phase of a large capital programme. So what I'm going to go actually, if you go on to the next slide please, Richard, if that's okay. So this is just a snapshot of past the programme, so as Lindsay's mentioned, it's about seventeen individual projects. What we've got here is just a few of them, a snapshot, and these are some of the town centre schemes. And what you can see there is from the original that was allocated by the town board at the very beginning of the process, before business cases are actually developed, through to actually going into advanced design, going to like the final stages of preparing the projects for delivery. As you can appreciate, we've seen costs changing, some goods, some going up, some actually coming down in some instances where actually the detailed design has shown it does, it's slightly less expensive than we thought it was going to be originally. And this slide just summarises that. And you can see that actually we've come out more or less where we should be, you know, we've had, I think, as Lindsay already mentioned, we've had to actually ask for capital for some support for some projects, but generally we're keeping things within the envelope of where they should be. Richard, if I could just go to the final slide in this, in this, my very brief presentation. So I think the thing I'd want to emphasise, how do we go about it? Where we see cost inflation, what do we do? How do we make it all fit? So securing extra funding, so as I take an example, we mentioned the Greenside project, we secured an extra two point three million pounds estate regeneration fund this time last year to help with the cost of that programme. And there's plenty of other examples, Lindsay's mentioned Active Travel Fund. Where if we can, we will go after other sources of funding, be that from national government, be that partner agencies to try and first of all plug any gaps and make the budget more realistic, more rounded than we can with our own resources. We are portioning within the programme, so clearly what we're saying there is some project could be done slightly differently, slightly more cheaply, we could combine things together slightly differently. But we are portioning rather than spending, we're not going to spend more money because we haven't got any more money. So it's just, we're portioning how we do the projects and with value engineering, I would say, yeah, we're very good at doing that. We can bring things down without diminishing the outcomes and the outputs and benefits. We can still deliver very strong, very attractive projects without actually sacrificing the quality. But we can tailor the scope, so bluntly speaking, if we have got the money, we will not spend the money. And we can actually make projects fit the available pot of money, which we will be doing as we get into like the final stages, later stages as we go into the final stages of delivery. So that's it really for me, that's just to give a So that's it really for me. That's just to give a snapshot of how we're doing some of that. So thank you. Thank you very much.
The Sunnocks, would you like to address us? You have unlimited amount of time as you're a councillor. But I would point out that we were here four hours last night.
I certainly don't intend to take a lot of time, and I'm so pleased that I was allowed to speak after we heard those excellent presentations and questions I had have been answered. The big question for me surrounds timing and how long these projects should take and what is slowing them down? And whether it matters that they're slowed that they're slowed down? And and to a certain extent, you said what you're doing to fix them, a bit of teaming and lading on your projects, giving up a couple, cutting a couple back and bearing the overruns on on some of them. It looks as St Nicholas Gate was quite a big one. I think there is a real problem on the timing. And I'd be very interested to know whether how the timing is turning out compared to what you promised when the grant applications came. And I bet you that they're behind. We've seen the capital programme reports as showing that everything's behind. We know that in the report, we're told that the We Are Colchester Board was set up in January twenty twenty. So we're knocking on for three years now when those luckiest people sitting on that board, you know, and they haven't seen very much delivery yet. We're told that an awful lot will be delivered in the first three months of next year. And, you know, question mark, is that deliverable? We know that on the peer review, this was, you know, one of the most forceful points that came across. You know, are we being realistic in 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 how quickly we can deliver them? Do we have an understanding of what's holding us up? I know absolutely what holds up such projects in the private sector, and I know how difficult it is. And and I'm sure you have different but equally difficult obstacles in the public sector. So we need to sort of get a heads round that and 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 then try and get some reality into it. And of course, it does matter in that the costs are obviously escalating as you're delayed. But also, question mark, does it affect if we don't spend what we're given? Does it affect our credibility when we're applying for new grants? That seems to be a really, really important point. Is it is it really Deluc that's been holding us up? Or is it something in ourselves? Hearing the presentation just now, I rather suspect it's Deluc, but is that really the case? So I'm going to be very, very interested to see how the panel approaches it. And I'm going to listen. I've got to disappear at seven o'clock for a parish council meeting, and I'm going to be really interested.
Thank you. Are there any immediate observations that you would like to to give following councillor Sykes's?
Yeah, of course, Chair. And I think it's a, you know, it's a very good question. Just to be clear, the town deal board had to be set up to oversee the development of the town investment programme. That was the requirement. There was quite a clear mandate laid out as to how we had to approach it locally. We're very lucky. We have an excellent town deal board. So it's been a good process for us, but they've had to be in from the start. So they've had to go through every stage of it, hence why they've been going for a period of time. And we didn't get the agreement to proceed beyond our business case stage until August twenty twenty two. But we're broadly on on track. The delays to St Nick's are around it being an accelerated project. So Balkan Gate two and St Nick's were supposed to be able to be delivered ahead of the main town deal programme, and they got treated as slightly separate cases in terms of agreement of the funding and the business cases for those. We obviously delivered one and the one caught in the current situation. So we got one through relatively quickly because it was tied in with the mercury and much more straightforward to deliver. And the other one has got caught with cost inflation, supply issues, et cetera. So but it's still within the scope of the overall town deal programme, which runs until twenty twenty six. So at the moment, we don't have any of our projects that are behind. We had a forecast of spend that the town deal board get to see in terms of the heat map across spend. And the majority, they start, as I've explained, in twenty twenty three. We always knew that the larger ones, so the walking and cycling route particularly and Heart of Greenstead would be much longer because they are much more complex projects to deliver. So at the moment, there's no delay to programme apart from St Nick's, which was, as I said, an accelerated programme. So will still be delivered clearly within the timescales of the town deal programme. I think also it's important to say, so CBC are directly project managing six, but eight of the projects are being managed by partners. And a considerable number of those that I've already talked through are already contracted or commissioned. And so the digital skills hub at Wilson Marriage is fully contracted. And so that's that's through Essex County Council. They have their frameworks, they have their delivery partners on board. So there's no risks with that one. The same with the youth facilities upgrade. That's also contracted through Essex County Council. And that work is, as I say, it's planned and ready to start. They just can't do it before Easter because it needs to be within a a period of the of school holidays. And the Essex County Hospital Public Realm Tender is also complete. So a lot of the works that I've mentioned already are already contracted. And it's under, for example, the the townhouse is also under the watch of Essex County. The town centre projects, they are largely public realm or historic buildings, so Jumbo, Holy Trinity, and then our public squares inevitably are going to take longer. And the town deal contribution actually is relatively straightforward for Jumbo and Holy Trinity because it's a fixed contribution towards repairs and feasibility funding to get those projects off the ground. Obviously, our interest is in the overall delivery of those projects, not just the pump priming through the town. So the town deal part is relatively straightforward and will be spent on time. The HLF bids for both of those projects, Heritage Lottery Fund bids for both of those projects, you know, will inevitably take longer. That process is much more complex, but we will be very supportive through that whole process to make sure there's an end delivery to match the initial investment that went in from the town deal programme. But those timescales will run way beyond the town deal programme, timescales of twenty twenty six, as it normally takes two to three years to get a Heritage Lottery Fund application fully through, fully funded and start on site. And I have been involved in several. So it's a it's an interesting process, but very thorough, which it should be given the amount of money they're giving out through it. And hopefully that gives you a bit of bit of comfort at this stage, and I hope we continue to be able to remain on track with our time timelines around the town deal programme.
What I'm hearing is that there's no delay in the programme. But I think there must have been a delay in perhaps the getting the approvals that it must I'm trying to put my finger on where the delays are. Because certainly we've seen the capital programming move even since I've been a councillor. We've seen it moving back and back and back. It must be, what you're defining is no delay. It must be different from what I was thinking of.
So I think there was probably about three months delay in the Deluc announcement that we got our town deal funding. We'd expected it in the spring and we got it in August, but that was the only delay. And we already got released to us the feasibility funding. So we carried on getting ready on the basis that as soon as they told us we could get going, we did. So yes, a delay in the announcement, but no significant delay to the programme.
So we need to look at the the project structure and assure ourselves that that it's moving forward in the best possible way. It's a complex series of projects. If there are only a few questions from colleagues, we can just ask them. If there are going to be a substantial number of questions, we probably need to have some structure like going through each project in turn and asking councillors whether they they have any questions on those projects. It probably might be better to do it that way in any case. But can I start off with two or three general points from the chair? If I think back, this project comes about as government putting money into those areas where there are multiple deprivations. And that was the primary rationale of the project. What I've not heard in the presentation this evening is how emphasis is being given to those projects which will have the greatest bearing on the most deprived areas. What I've heard is that the public open space, glorious as it is by the mercury, has been completed ahead of everything else. And some of the other public space projects may well move forward fairly quickly. But mind, these are not projects which are going to materially assist in reducing the level of deprivation. And unless we can show at the end of this project, we've spent twenty million pounds of government funds. And as a result, deprivation in the borough has actually reduced, even if it is only a marginal reduction. Because I think that we need three hundred million pounds of infrastructure spending to make any real difference. But I haven't heard how the issue of deprivation and areas which have significant multiple deprivation, and that was the that was the principal move in how we define the area that was to be served by this project. How we're ensuring that the programme is is attending to those issues. So that if there are to be delays, those delays are not going to be experienced by those projects, which are going to have maximum benefit, reducing deprivation. If you see the sort of thread, now I wonder whether you can just give us some reassurance that you're not tackling just the easy projects, which, you know, are way, way, way the mercury, the area outside Mercury is absolutely delicious. I mean, went there for the farmer's market and it was great, but I don't quite see how that is reducing the impact of deprivation in the sorry, I'm laboring the point a little, but if you could just explain.
No problem. Thank you. Very, very good points. Very well made. So in terms of the programme as a whole, the Heart of Greenside programme, of which I think about a third of all the money is actually going to that scheme. But it's actually much broader than that. It's actually about a forty million pound overall headline budget. And that's tackling the actual deprivation in Greenstead, which is in the ten percent most deprived was nationally. So that really is it's always been a focus since we started writing the town investment plan, that we were absolutely focused on trying to use the money as we've got the opportunity. And it's very rare to get an opportunity to do a large regeneration programme of that scale. So actually absolutely go for Greenstead because we can really make a difference. And we can absolutely, through that new community hub, you know, help with some much better interventions for people in that community, improving health and wellbeing outcomes, improving access to employment, improving skills through that new community hub and all of its offering, which is much greater than anything that we can deliver in the facilities there. So absolutely, that's high priority. I mean, the whole programme is a high priority, but that one in particular, I think in terms of outputs and outcomes and meeting the deprivation is really important to us. And just two or three other examples, just to give a bit more context. The Holy Trinity Church scheme is going to deliver a community hub in a repurposed historic building. And that community hub will be offering services delivered by the voluntary sector to those most in need. So there will be counselling services, there will be, you know, advice on poverty, on fuel poverty, on winter warmth, all those programmes that Community Three Sixty currently offer from those existing town centre hub, they'll be able to do more, better, you know, with more partners, in more, taking more space and delivering to more people in the in the heart of our community in Colchester. So again, again, helping those most most in need of that support, especially facing the crisis that we're now the cost of living crisis and winter pressures, albeit that's going to take a year or two to deliver, but those issues will still be there. And then cycling, cycling hub, that and the cycling routes, that will help people who are on lower incomes. So at Greenstead, we're going to be asking natural bikes, we're delivering bikes. There's going to be a cycle route from Greenstead to the town centre and then cycle parking, secure parking in the town centre. The whole point of that and all the other intentions that are going on, funded by the county council as well into in cycling infrastructure, is to help people on lower incomes. Because cycling is it's cheap, it's sustainable, it's convenient, and it's healthy. It's a brilliant way of helping people who can't afford the bus fares, cars, cars, car, used car transport and parking to travel and get into employment. And that's the idea, is to link people to areas where there are economic opportunities, social opportunities much easily. So we're really keen on that cycle hub and the cycle route delivers that. Final example, digital, digital, having a digital skills hub will absolutely help those, again, who need to re-skill, re-train, re-develop their different employment markets. Again, it's focusing on those favourites from employment who need some support or re-training, or re-develop, re-skilling, upskilling. It will give them access to those digital skills, digital support and a safe environment, a place they can go and learn and study. So again, and that's that's actually Newtown, which isn't the most deprived part of it, but it does have some challenges. And it's the idea is that site will also be accessed by walking and cycling and public transport and can help those who need that support the most. Thank you.
Next question. When we had the early presentations, we were doing the first scrutiny work on this deal. Much was made, if I remember, about the the matched funding and the leveraged funding, which was going to to come in. And we were assured that starting from the, it was twenty five million, but eventually came down to eighteen a bit million. There was going to be a multiplication factor of some times three, times four in terms of the total benefit because of the spin offs and the participations in in the the major project. Can you advise us how well we're doing? I know there were there were a couple of references in your presentation where others had coming with funding, but as a project overall, how well are we doing in terms of leveraging in other money to to sit on top of what we've got from government?
I'll start, but I'll let Matthew continue with this one. So I would say we're where we need to be at this point in time. So we've got the Estate Renewal Fund, we've got the Active Travel Fund, which are both three point two million and two point, I can't remember, two point three million. I knew there was one way around and the other way around. And so already five million direct investment in the Heritage Lottery Fund bids that I was talking about that will unlock, they'll both unlock around five, in total around five million. But of course, there's a process to go through for those. So this is an enabler to help us unlock that funding. So they'll come further down the line. But for for some of the projects, I'd say we are exactly where we need to. But I'll let Matthew just talk about particularly the Heart of Greens because that's probably the biggest ones, one with the match funding.
Thank you, Lindsay. So for Heart of Greenstead, we've got the potential to go for Homes England funding because if we are providing affordable homes, new affordable homes, that brings with it the opportunity to go for that housing funding, which again reduces the cost to the council. We also went for, as part of our business case, the housing revenue account model. So in other words, the council borrowing, but at a lower risk and a lower rate of interest than normal council borrowing because it's generating social housing. So again, that hasn't happened yet because we are at the early stages of that, and that is a long term regeneration programme. And as Lindsay was saying earlier, that might go beyond twenty twenty six because of its scale. But again, we're very confident that that could bring many more millions of pounds of investment that can be leveraged alongside the examples Lindsay's already mentioned. Thank you.
I'm concerned that there are no stated more topics in this area. I mean, this 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 is not an area covered in in the report. And is there a table somewhere which summarises the assurances that were given in the the earlier papers indicating just what additional funding was going to be leveraged in? And does it become a key performance indicator for those who are managing the project? At the moment, it sounds like intentions. It would be good to apply to various funding bodies. But is it going to happen? When is it going to happen? Is it set in concrete to the extent that it can be? Because we we sometimes we're not sure when these funding opportunities are going to come along. We just have to be opportunistic. But unless we have distinct targets about making the most of this project, it might happen or it might not happen. And I think as a scrutiny panel, we want to hear answers which convince us that it's definitely going to happen, and there is a cunning plan behind to make it happen.
Thank you. So just picking those points up in turn. The when we wrote our town investment plan, and which was based on the prospectus from government, there were no formal targets and requirements on government on us for leverage funding, match funding and so forth. Whereas in some bits there are. So for the recent levelling up fund bid, for example, we had to demonstrate ten percent match funding, actual, actual real money. We don't have to do that for town deal. But we are capturing as we go along what we're what we've, you know, what we're finding, we're driving it, you know, we really You know, we really want to achieve what we said in the town investment plan. And we'll bring it back to this, this panel. I think it's too early now really to say it's this or it's that. We haven't, you know, we've given some examples, but it's hard at this point, because we're only two months into the delivery phase, frankly, of the whole programme. But we can bring this back. I think that's the best thing.
Yeah, but the programme has been going for some long time, which would give the opportunity to crystallise in one's mind where the funding is going to come from, how it's going to be pursued and the vigour with which it's going to be pursued and the reporting chain through which the council will, will understand what is being done on this project. Just, just to make sure we get the absolute maximum out of it and we don't, we don't lose any opportunities.
So, I mean, I think, I think it's, I think it's a very good point. And as Matthew said, it wasn't part of the requirements that we had any target in around it. But rest assured, as funding arises, and of course, there's plenty of funding streams that come through. So the levelling up wasn't even an opportunity for us at the point at which we wrote the town investment programme. So as opportunities arise, we absolutely secure them. But we, there'll be funding streams coming forward from the current government and future ones that we don't even know about now. So, you know, we are absolutely securing what we can. Active Travel 3 is a good example of that. As I say, we, we got one of the only allocations in Essex because our route was organised, it was planned, we could show the detailed business case. And it was therefore able to demonstrate early delivery against that funding stream. And that's what we need to be able to do. So the more we work our projects up, the more they are able to attract in additional investment. So we're very clear on that, on those that we're already targeting. As I said, the heritage lottery funds, they enable us to complete projects that are already started. But any additional funding streams such as Shared Prosperity and the Levelling Up Fund, we are already targeting. But we can absolutely bring you back and an overview of all the additional investment that we're either targeting or we're receiving. So I think it's a very good point.
Are there any general comments from colleagues before we go through the projects one by one? Cast Bonn.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, a bit of a sideline, because I appreciate the work. It's all scoped out for the town deal. But when councillor Laws and myself chaired the Heritage Committee some time ago, a lot of the time was spent on city centre signage and a lot of work was done. So we've already done a lot of preparation for that. But obviously, it's not part of this deal. But I just wanted to raise it at this meeting and have it minuted. How can we perhaps link that to get the funding? I don't know where we're at with that. I would appreciate a report back of where we are with city signage, et cetera. But if, if, is there any way it can be linked and we can get funding? Because I appreciate it's going to be expensive, but you've got a lot of new public squares, public open spaces, that's going to need new signage. And we need uniformed signage was another key point. It's all over the place at the moment and quite a disgrace for a city. So I just wondered if that could be minuted and if that could be taken forward and how, quite honestly. Thank you.
So I am aware a considerable piece of work was done by our neighbourhood team around signage. But obviously, our city status has slightly changed the parameters there. So my understanding is that it will be considered as part of the overall city status work programme. So we'll absolutely take that away and give you an update of when we're likely to be able to bring forward what's possible, but also what the scale of challenges and maybe what the scale of the funding challenges. It, it won't be able to be considered as part of the town deal programme, because as you say, that's all fixed. But very happy to take that away and look at that.
And of course, we have agreed this evening that we will be scrutinising the town deal programme. And hopefully, the signage will be in one of the eight major projects under that programme. Councillor Laws.
Hi. General point, we all know that if you want to make an omelette, you've got to crack eggs and that can be messy. And so public square improvement realm works are messy and can be inconvenient. Can we get an assurance that the businesses and the stakeholders within the vicinities of those key sites are going to be proactively and regularly updated and be appraised honestly if there are delays? You know, we all get frustrated when we don't know what's happening. So I just think we just need to be really proactive with them. I've been asked a couple of times, one venue in particular, in the historic centre of Colchester. And I don't really want to be asked again, because I just want them to know that it's, it's on. And they should be telling me frankly, what's happening.
I mean, certainly our engagement with the bid, the Business Improvement District is extensive. But if, if there are any stakeholders in that area, businesses in that area that aren't being communicated to via the Business Improvement District, then please put them our way. We're very happy to pick up that conversation.
Any more general questions? I have one further general question. The Borough Council's capital programme is in difficulties. That's not criticism, that's just sort of stating what the peer review and everyone says. Fortunately, the town deal is in the sort of the opposite camp. We have the money, we're surging ahead. Are there any interlinkages between the capital programme and the town deal? Although they're all listed on the same capital programme monitor, but they're separate compartments. Are there any unforeseen linkages between our overall capital programme and the, the town deal capital funds, which could cause any problems? Are we going to find this sort of a technical clause somewhere which says that, that we can't go ahead because, because of requirements we hardly know about? Are we sure that the linkage is, is not strong so that any problems with our own capital programme, if we describe it as that, you know, anything but the town deal capital programme will not interact with the town programme? And of course, they're the same people that are just trying to deliver both. And that of course must be a common linkage which could have interactions.
Yeah, that's again, a very good question. And our review of the capital programme following the peer review recommendation has started. I think probably just a couple of points I make, because I don't want to preempt the work of the capital programme review. But in setting up the town deal, one thing that set it apart from some of the other funding streams that we get through from government is we did get funding for actually running and managing the programme. And so we have a programme office for the town deal. And, you know, it's no surprise that therefore that means the level of resource that we have to ensure that we have the proper oversight is in place is really strong. So we were able to do that from the very beginning, before any of our projects had mobilised. And, and I think that, you know, that's just really helpful. And I think there are quite a lot of things that we can learn from our approach in that programme office space that we can apply across to the wider capital programme. And I'm sure there'll be some opportunities there. But the way we manage the town deal programme, we consider it obviously at the senior board as part of the overall programme. But of course, it's ring fenced. And so there are some read across. So we have, I've said, I've cited the two schemes, but we have agreed that we'll put a bit of our own capital programme investment in because the overall return from the town deal programme is so significant that actually it's a very small investment into those projects to bring them forward. But, but the majority of projects in the town deal programme are not reliant at all on the council's capital programme. That is it without going too far into the, the capital programme review.
Yes, that's certainly the assurance we were looking for. Can we now go through the, the projects in a sort of structured manner? Perhaps the paragraph five listing is, is a suitable way to do it unless there are any easier ways. And so we grouped together the questions on, on, on particular topics rather than having round questioning and having dart around from project to, to project. So on paragraph five on page 23, the first project that we pick up is the heart of Grinstead project work. Colleagues, do you have any questions on, on the projects and delivery of the, of the heart of Grinstead? So we, we, we're content that, that that project at this very juvenile stage is okay. Okay, let's move on to the next, the next projects, which is five, seven onwards, the town centre. The first one is St Nicholas Square, where that project has appeared as a, as a project having difficulties. The difficulties are set out in the, in the order paper. And we've heard of the, the need to ensure that the work is done at a sympathetic time with the seasons of the year and the number of people likely to be using these, these areas. Colleagues, do you have any questions on the St Nicholas Square project? You're happy. Okay. Moving on, the Curbler Street Balkan Gate Phase Two, which I've already said, I think that's a really superb, superb project. Managed by our own AM4, of course, and that is done. So that's a big tick in the box. Next project is Jumbo, managed by the North Essex Heritage Trust. How quickly is this project likely to move ahead? Do we have any, any really firm information on, on the likely speed?
So the first step is for the North Essex Heritage Trust to submit their National Lottery Heritage Fund bid for, I think it's £3 million plus, and that goes in in February. And then they've got to obviously wait for the time for that to go through the process, the approval process, to have the panel process basically. And yeah, it takes up to a year and it's because it's so big, that's actually going to like their national. So it's not just a regional bid, that's like a national level bid. So that could take up to a year, I think, for the process just to get confirmation of the funding. If they get that funding, then I think they'll be in a place to go sort of almost straight into their delivery phase of reconstruction, repairing the building, repairing the structure, modifying, updating the structure and, you know, bringing it into its future use. So yeah, it's a year probably for, to get the funding package and probably for one half, two years for construction beyond that.
The next project is the Essex County Hospital project. Councillor Laws.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, I just want to jog back a bit actually, because my memory is a bit hazy on this, but for clarity. Lovely to hear that Dennis describes the area outside of the Mercury Theatre as delicious. I quite agree. But am I right in saying that that is effectively phase one and there is still phase two to come? So it's not finished, Chair. And am I right to say that, that you've been able to rationalise some of the realm around that project to be able to help fund the increasing costs on St Nicholas Square? So for example, you're leaving a bit more grass there, I think. I just wanted that on the record, so we're all clear. So it's not finished, Dennis. It's going to get even more delicious.
If I, if I could just come back on that, just to give you clarity. So two, two things around Balkan Gate too. So one is we did, in the first phase of revisiting all the projects to ensure we could afford to, to run them. We did agree, because there's some actually quite lovely green space around there. And it was appreciated to take it out and put it back in again. So that, that was kind of the first change. But Balkan Gate Phase Two is the area that we're talking to Jumbo about, because it links very closely with the Jumbo development. And again, it would be daft to deliver some public realm, only to have it dug up again while the construction phase of Jumbo is undergoing and then put it down again. So we will work very closely with them. They also want some key access lines across. So it just makes sense for us to bring that project much more closely aligned with Jumbo and that team.
So the Essex County Hospital, again, where substantial progress has been made. Public space, any comments, any questions? Holy Trinity Church 511, where we've heard the difficulties, the the project cannot proceed until the urgent repairs have been done, the urgent repairs are going to be done. So no holdups on that project. Councillor Scored is.
Thank you, Chair and Vice-Chair. Yes, Holy Trinity Church. I'm just wondering if we do have a plan for if Community 360 did not take us up on that. This is a hugely historic building. Councillor Laws will tell you about his favourite Saxon tower. But this is, this is a historic building that could have a lot of use. And we have talked in the past about using it as an information centre. So I am wondering if there are some backup plans if we don't get Community 360, because I think we have to make the most of this building.
Again, another very good question. So two contingency plans in place at the moment. So one is around how we bring forward the Heritage Lottery Fund bid for that project. And we're already talking to Heritage Lottery Fund about that. And they are very open to us bringing forward that application. It's our building, it's our, at the moment, it's our risk. Because it's a very bold, wonderful, but potentially quite challenging building. And I think that's the issue for Community 360. I completely understand that until we know all the unknowns on that building, there is a reticence at the moment about taking on that risk. So I see no issue with us bringing that forward and through to a Heritage Lottery Fund application, which would be welcomed. We, we understand that. In terms of occupation, I, if we can progress the building, then I think Community 360 would be really keen to run their hub from there. It's just all about de-risking it. But having said that, when you do a national Heritage Lottery Fund application, you have to explore alternative uses. So they want to know you have a Plan B and a Plan C, it's part of the application process. So we would need to explore that anyway to ensure that we're satisfied that if they were to put quite a considerable investment in, that it's going to be used regardless of who comes forward as that end user and we've got a vision for it. So you're absolutely right, that process would be gone through anyway. So we're already working through all of the possibilities on that, because it's such a key project for the overall town, soon to be city centre.
And Community 360 can manage the delays. They're, they're in a position to respond at any time. They, they don't have resources which are only focused on the original timeframe for the project.
Yeah, again, that's a good question, because they are in a temporary location at the moment. And we are continually talking to them about that, but there's no issue at present. So it would be more about how quickly they need to get out of their current location. But there was always going to be a gap in that transition anyway. So we've been working with them on that chair for quite some time, because the project, again, same as Jumbo. You're on, you know, once you get into Heritage Lottery Fund territory, you're on a two, three, four year timeline anyway. So we would, we've been working with them quite closely on that anyway.
Moving on to the physical connectivity project, we had a fairly comprehensive explanation of that earlier on. Are there any questions on, on those projects? Digital connectivity, the digital skills hubs. Do we, do we have any targets on how many additional jobs we, we think are going to be created by these digital hubs? And are we still sure that the targets that were given at the beginning of the project are still going to be, be relevant?
Thank you. So picking up on the digital working hub, it's actually been funded by two funding streams. There's the town deal, £1 million, and there's also the local growth fund, £3.77 million. So there's actually two business cases which interrelate with each other. Going back to the first business case, there were, I think from memory, and I can check this out, 16 jobs, 16, 16 jobs were created by that scheme. It might be more, no, I think actually over time, but I think that was what we committed to in the, in the business case, which was approved by the local enterprise partnership. With the digital working hub, that's actually increased slightly because of the digital working hub. It's actually got a focus on the virtual reality and augmented reality sectors. And it's going to bring in some really sort of high-end jobs in that very specialised sector. So I think that will actually increase beyond that. But actually, taking a point of what's changed, we know that obviously the cost, cost of energy has increased, for example. There's a few points of change since I wrote that business case two years ago. So I'm actually going to review it. I'm actually going to begin a review of that business case, given cost inflation. So I'm actually going to review it, I'm actually going to begin a, a review of that business case, given cost inflation, and actually not just in terms of the capital build, but in terms of the ongoing running of that building. Is it still, you know, have any, has anything changed that material affects delivering that scheme? So the jobs and the outputs will be part of that review, thank you.
As a throwaway comment, I cannot help but think that perhaps these projects would have been better, just a little closer to Greenstead, which is the, the major area of deprivation. And I, I forget how many, what the unemployment level is there. But 20 jobs is not going to make all that much difference to the level generation in our, in the most trying area of the borough.
Yeah, so those were for the digital skills hub and the digital working hub. Obviously, the digital skills hub is all about reskilling people. So the amount of people it supports and helps into employment will be far in excess of that. Those are the jobs that are directly created from the projects themselves, as opposed to those that are helped into employment or into work. So, sorry, important distinction to make. And, and the point about the cycling and walking route that we are funding is it provides that vital connection through to, to Greenstead as well. And the, the, the digital working hub, so the Centre for Immersive Patient, as it's now called, is about that digital offer as part of that creative culture that we're creating, which is regenerating one of the areas of the town that most needs it. So I take, absolutely take the point about the heart of Greenstead, but we also have parts of our soon to be city centre require some real investment, and we've done the, the creative hub Queen Street, which has been a big success. This is building on from that, and we'll continue to support what is a vibrant, young offer from some of our businesses coming into that area. And, you know, that they, the clustering of those businesses is also really important, because they work on it, they're very small in their nature, and they work on a network across. So the location of it is really, really important, which is why it is chosen to be where it is.
Any further questions on the, the digital connectivity? Transformed youth facilities. An area of activity where the scrutiny panel was in fact quite active under the, the previous chairman. But we, we failed to, to get the youth zone, but this is the next best thing, I guess. Any questions? Have the problems with the, the lease on, on the townhouse been resolved? At the time the scrutiny panel last looked at, at the townhouse, it was owned by a, a charity which was not in operation anymore. County Council had a lease which was about to expire, but needed landlords' permission to, to create a youth zone or now to, to carry out the, the architects' plans under the, the town deal. And there's no reference to, to that sticking point, that landlords' permission could not be obtained in the report. I just wondered whether that's, that's been resolved or whether it's just been shelved.
That's been, that's been resolved, it's absolutely been resolved. I think the main problem we were having was that building has to be used as a, as a youth, as a facility, it can't really be used for anything else. And that, that is the case, and that will still be, and so really that, that has been resolved, that issue now.
Good. Now, Councilor Laws.
Again, my memory is a bit hazy, so some clarity would be welcomed on the investment that's been made into the Highwoods youth facility. I understand that there are conversations in other places about how a Highwoods community facility might be facing some capital challenges, and I just wondered if all the money had been spent on the particular site that we know at the moment, opposite the Rover's Tyres, the Highwoods youth facility, or whether in fact monies might be going towards another building to, to help challenge over another part of the ward of Highwoods, which we all care deeply about.
So thank you, thank you, Councilor Laws. They're relatively modest amounts, there's, there's a facility in Highwoods, there's another one in Stanway, and they're relatively, they were of the order of a hundred thousand pounds each, or so the technical investment. And I think, I think, sorry, the answer is no, they had to be ring fenced to the existing buildings and facilities, thank you.
I think that takes us towards the end of the, the list of the groups of projects. So as a committee, we are, we are happy that we, we've, we've heard, heard of progress, we're happy with progress. We, we identify no serious defects, one or two minor comments, which we'll include in the, in the report of the meeting. But none of them seem sufficiently strong to stop making recommendations to cabinets. Although, Leader, would you care to? Do you want a recommendation?
Absolutely not. No, I just want to thank the committee for the thoughtfulness of the conversation. And, and to say my relative silence is because it's so well pitched and presented. And, and, and that's, that's as it should be, but I wanted to just pick up a couple of points from, from councils that were made and just to reassure you that absolutely we get the importance of learning. So that strong story, although it's early for much of this, not for all of it, is about project management, a discipline and an approach, and awareness of cost and contract. And I just want to acknowledge that that's what we got to make sure. We have established the same level of assurance so that you and we and those we serve will have that for the rest of the capital programme. It's going to take us some time to work through, but you know, I'm, I, you'd expect, I've been on at this for a couple of years too, that this is, this is the kind of thing that we've got to have, that kind of discipline that's been described. And as I say, if we do that, then we'll be able to give you and us a better sense of what's going to happen, what we can do. Back to your points about the community centre, Darius in Highwoods, what we can afford to go and do. Last point is really helpful to have that rounding out, and we've taken that. About the need to ensure that there is a running focus on outcomes, not just doing stuff, important though that is. And, and that we also track as best we can leverage. It wasn't defined ever, even orally, but it absolutely was a principle underpinning town fund, the town fund approach. And it'd be right for us to track it and also forecast, thank you.
The panel is asked to consider the progress made to date. We have done that, we have no, no serious recommendations to make where, on areas where we had concerns. So can we agree that we've noted the report?
Great.
Okay. Thank you. We now move on to item 10, no, item 11, sorry. Which is a, a small work item that the panel asked should be undertaken following our scrutiny of the, of the policy on, on homes. And that is now reported to us in detail. Councilor Young, yet again, the faithful portfolio holder who supports us on every occasion. And this is one of those knotty problems where you can't please everyone. And it's, I think it's a case of, is the, but with the question we're asking as a panel, is the balance in the right place in regard to the priority given to, to, to family affiliations? Scott, do you wish to address the panel before or after the officer's report? Yes, yes, do, do you wish to, do you wish to speak to us before or after the officer's report on the matter? The floor is yours.
Thank you Chair, if I can just say thank you to the panel for bringing this to the committee. When I, when I saw it was coming, my little old heart did a little dance of delight, I was so pleased to see it. Because over the years, I have tried to persuade Colchester Borough Homes that Stanway is rural. And I've got knocked back on that, it was a bit of a challenge, I knew I was sort of pushing it a bit. I've also asked when there's been, with the development that we've had in Stanway, for some of the properties to be ring fenced for Stanway people. And the reason that I've asked this is because over the years, I've heard of stories of, as I say, a mature daughter living with her parents, but couldn't move out because she couldn't afford it. And she needed to be near her parents because she was their primary carer. And I've also got a story where it's in reverse, where the son was living with mum, but needed support from mum, and they, they could not find a place where they were close enough. So, you know, that sort of ticks the boxes there. And I, I, looking, looking at the report, the, the implications, I, I don't think 4.16 is a problem, because as we all know, demand really outstrips the supply. But to try and make it balanced, I asked a few questions, and I just, if you can just bear with me, I'd just like to share with you a couple of numbers and, and comments that were made to me. And it says, the housing situation in Colchester at the moment is under immense pressure. The Housing Solutions Team are receiving inquiries from around 100 households monthly. Many of them are from people who are working and have been set in private rented homes, which have been given notice on, or own occupiers who have mortgage arrears and facing repossession, and are not able to afford the private rents as an alternative locally. There are currently around 230 households living in temporary accommodation. The highest bid on a three-bedroom home in September was in Riptree Close, which is in Mile End. And that was bid on by 435 applicants. And going back to my ward Stanway, there have been 38 lets in Stanway since April, 13 of which were let to households who've previously been homeless. So I think, I think over the years, especially more recently, things have changed. You know, I would really like to have the locality link there for my Stanway families, and some of them have been there for generations. But the situation's changed and, and I thought, where the heck I was going with this? I, I just think, I was looking at the criteria actually, and I think it could be possible still to do something, but I think we need to tighten up the criteria. So that the, the people that really need support have got the support. But there is still something in there for people that, local people that need to stay for very good reasons within the locality. So I just, going back, your action required is to consider our approaches. So I just thought I'd throw my two pennies in about what I thought about and what I've learnt over the years. So thank you.
Thank, thank you for your comments. Councilor Young, would you like to just sort of set the context before we have the officer presentation?
Yes, thanks very much Chair, good to see you all again. Yeah, I mean, you know, Lesley has mentioned a lot of the stuff that I was going to mention. I think we are in an absolute crisis situation here in Colchester with our accommodation and the demands that are being placed on our accommodation. So, you know, I, I read also, you know, 4.16 in terms of unintended consequences. And we have a policy at the moment which is consistent with the other authorities that we are in partnership with in Gateway to Home Choice in terms of that policy. And we have to have some consistency with them on, on, on the policy. I mean, there's a pilot there which I think is going to be really interesting to see how that pans out. And, you know, I've come this evening to listen to the deliberations of the scrutiny panel. But I think, you know, I'd be minded to ask you to sort of hold fire in terms of recommendations until that pilot has been, you know, tested really to see how that goes. I mean, we do, you know, have occasions where a, a local letting's policy is applied for specific reasons. And sometimes that's about the sensitivity of, of what's gone before, and we don't want that property to be occupied by somebody that might cause problems in the future if they've already had issues in that locality. And whilst I think, you know, on the face of it, it sounds like a good idea to go with the local family context policy, we do have to focus on need. And as Lesley has said, you know, 200, 235 people are currently in temp at the moment. And Sue and I will know exactly what that feels like as we visit Hargood Close very recently. And actually what all the housing officers tell me is, well, actually Hargood House is some of the best temporary accommodation we are using. And I, you know, yet to go out and look at some of the HMOs with Anna Watson soon, just to see just what kind of conditions people are living in in Colchester. It's a sad fact that we just do not have the accommodation we need to meet the needs of people that are on our register. As the polit, as the document says, you know, you can join the register at 16. Nobody is prevented from joining the register. And we've got 3,000 people sitting on that register at the moment. But yeah, I'll leave it there, Chair, and look forward to hearing Karen's presentation.
Thank you very much, Chair, Councilor Young. So yes, the, the report was at the request of scrutiny panel. And provides some information on the options that are available, available to the council to change, change the way that general needs properties are let to households on the housing register. To obviously prioritise people who have got ties to certain communities. And it also looks that the way in which affordable housing to buy through initiatives like shared ownership can also be restricted to local people. And as Councilor Young has already mentioned, we have a housing allocations policy, which is a legal requirement for us to allocate affordable and social housing. And our allocations policy sets out properties applicants for housing are eligible for. So it, the policy prioritises applicants on their need for housing. And we are required to follow a number of rules that are set out in law, so we have to have those. And has, as already has been mentioned, we are a partner in Gateway to Home Choice, along with other Essex and Suffolk local authorities. The problem that we have is that whenever we impose, impose criteria for certain properties on the, on the register, then housing need, sorry, other than housing need, it tends to then relegate the importance of housing need, which is our determiner of who is housed. But we have two options available to us if we wish to restrict the way that general needs properties. And I have to stress that these are not those on rural exception sites, are let to households on the, on the register. So those, those two options are through local lettings plans, which Councilor Young has mentioned, and section 106 agreements. And in terms of our local lettings plans, these can be used on both new developments and those that are existing homes. The plan applies to specified groups of properties and sets out why and who will be given preference. Those decisions are made jointly by the landlord of the property and the council. So local lettings plans usually are made to help create So local lettings plans usually are made to help create balanced communities and achieve wider community objectives and to help improve difficult areas. And that also includes tackling antisocial behaviour, which we do use. That is one of the main reasons why we do use local lettings policies. Um, and also we have been using it more actually for our own council new build just recently, um, to make the best use of the housing stock and to give priority for releasing a property in need. So for example, um, on some of our new build sites, we've encouraged, um, and, um, publicised these properties, encourage people to downsize. And this will release a family home for people that need it, who are on the register. Um, the Housing Act requires housing authorities to allocate accommodation in accordance with housing authorities allocation policy. And this is to ensure that certain categories of applicants are given reasonable preference. I'm not going to go through those, um, but we have to, um, the nineteen ninety six act sets out five groups of applicants for whom reasonable preference must be given. Um, the other way, um, uh, or the other reason, or the other way for us to, um, change or deviate from, um, the allocations policy is through section one O six agreements. Um, and this is on sites where affordable housing is provided under a section one O six agreement. And the agreement sets out the requirements such as the type and size of affordable homes. Um, and also the tenure and any nomination and allocation arrangements for the affordable homes. Um, this is agreed at the development stage, so in negotiation with the developers. And, um, the council can also restrict, use the section one O six agreement to restrict the way that these properties are let to households on the housing register. Uh, the agreements have to be agreed by both parties, that's both the council and the developer, and our binding legal, legal documents. And the section one O six agreement would need to be put in place for first lets on properties to buy under shared ownership. And there is a section, um, on appendix A that explains about shared ownership. Um, as has been mentioned already, um, in four point one six, placing restrictions on the way that general needs properties are let to households in housing need with a local connection may have some unintended consequences. Um, and um, in a nutshell, households with a high need for housing in Colchester that don't have a local connection may have longer to wait for accommodation. Um, in some cases, there's not enough interest in the properties from households who have a local connection. And we certainly have had this most recently in some properties we've had at Boxstead. Um, and this has impacted on void times and rent loss. Um, I think the allocations, um, team have had to run three, um, shortlists for a property in Boxstead, um, uh, a little while ago. So, um, there, there have, there have been instances where this has happened. And most importantly, households in breakfast and temporary accommodation may have longer to wait for permanent housing and obviously will have a financial cost on the council. Um, and as been, as has been mentioned as well, there's a pilot scheme at the moment that, or a proposal for a pilot scheme at Layer de la Haye. And, um, this will help us to kind of illustrate how, how these things will work in practice. Um, and I won't go into the details of that, it's all in the report. Um, but I don't know if anybody has any questions. Thank you.
Councillor Scordish.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I mean, my questions relate to the pilot scheme, uh, well, concerns as well, really. Um, so Layer de la Haye, lovely place. But if we're being realistic, the families that we are looking to house are generally low income families. And we just discussed about why we're investing in Greenstead and to get people starting using the bus if they can afford it. Layer de la Haye doesn't really offer that option. You have very dangerous country roads. And the last bus back to Layer de la Haye, I think it's five thirty. So the jobs you're working for, low income, are probably bar work, retail work, where you won't be able to fit it around those times. They may be at the hospital as well, where you have a very quick run to get back to town. So I, I do think that's a slight worry about where that is. Not saying that we shouldn't have affordable homes in rural areas, but just for a pilot scheme, it would seem more better to have it in there if it's more urban, that has better bus connections to get people into the main areas of work, which are, as we know, university, business park, town centre and hospital. Um, and I guess another, um, comment that's kind of, uh, come up a lot from people who are on the waiting list is that when they do get to visit a property, they're sometimes told, if you do not accept this property, you will be made intentionally homeless. So they have no choice but to accept this property. And some people take that as a challenge and say, well, no, I don't, this isn't the area I'm looking for. Or I'm not happy with the condition of this house. And then they're thrown out on their ear. So that's a slight concern as well. I understand there's issues around legislation, but it does seem we have a very strict policy on that. And I think we're being a bit, um, a bit more, a bit too legal and not emotional enough or not, not caring enough is how I see that. Um, so they're the main points I want to make, Chair.
Could you address councillor Scordish's issues?
Yes, thank you for your, um, uh, for your question, or your comments, I should say. Um, I can't really comment on, um, what's happened to individuals, um, because I'm, I'm not operational. So I can't actually comment and, um, on those individual cases because I don't know about them specifically. So I'm, I apologise for that. Um, I'm, I'm sure if, if, you know, that question wanted to be answered, then we could, we could ask, um, uh, the allocations manager to look into that. Um, however, um, sorry, you're, I'm just kind of thinking about your other points. Um, in terms of actually, I wasn't sure what the, in terms of the policy, um, the allocations policy is, a lot of it is by law. So, um, that, you know, that's the way it is and we can't, you know, there's a considerable amount of that that we can't change. Um, we do have meetings that are held, um, monthly, project board meetings, um, of which I'm currently the, the chair of that. So Gateway to Home Choice Project Board, we have two. We have the project board, which is, um, the overarching strategic board. And then we also have an operational, um, project group as well that meets regularly too. Um, and we look at all the issues, problems, anything coming up. And also where we need to make changes to the policy. And obviously that has to be agreed across the seven local authorities that are part of Gateway to Home Choice, so.
So the, the other bit was on the pilot scheme in Layer de la Haye, kind of like location, yeah?
Yeah, so, um, I wasn't, sorry, I, I wasn't quite sure about where, because the actual pilot scheme itself, um, initially will be for people that have a local affiliation or a local connection to Layer de la Haye. So, um, that's why the pilot scheme has been set up to see the impact that that would have um, by sort of allowing, um, that criteria to be put in place. Thank you.
That's great. Thanks for clarifying. Very, very local. Keeping them in the village, well, that's fine.
Councillor Laws. So I've got huge gaps in my knowledge on housing. Um, apologies advice to these sort of lines of inquiries, sounds silly. Um, but I, I wonder if, um, the room could respond to a, a couple of scenarios and thinking about, um, Stanway uh, in particular. So let's just, let's just create some hypotheticals, right? So, um, we've got, we've got two, two families. So let's, let's say family A, for whatever reason, there's a relationship breakdown, there's children involved, young children at school within a vicinity. Um, and I don't know, for example, someone leaves the household, rent arrears emerge, court, um, section, um, notice gets issued, they have to leave, they are homeless. Um, it is that simple. There's children involved. Then another family, let's call them family B, um, they've arrived, they've fled domestic violence from some London and they're, they're sleeping on a friend's sofa in Stanway for a couple of weeks. They have a big Barney and the friend says, oi, you and your child, you can't stay here anymore, off you go. So you've got two households there with children effectively presenting as homeless. Now, is it my understanding that they've, they've, they've both got equal rights therefore? Even though the one family has effectively just rocked up without a local affinity other than a, a friend, a so-called friend who didn't host them for very long. But what about the longstanding family that's been here for five or, or ten years? Much more embedded in that community. I just wonder if there's any discretion around that. If we have the power to determine some discretion around that, um, if, if through this place, through, through, through legislation, I don't know. I'm, I'm really ignorant on this.
It's very complex. Um, they would both have to be assessed. Um, and it's very difficult on an overarching or just a, um, you know, a sort of brief examples because a lot more would go look into that. It depends whether they're homeless, their, their situation would be looked at to see whether they were homeless, whether they're homeless. You know, there are five tests of homelessness. Um, so they would have to be considered for the family that are sofa surfing. Um, and obviously they're, for someone that's been on the register a long time, they will accrue time on the register. Depends what banding they're on, depends what their situation was when they applied for hu- for housing. So there's, there are so many variables. It's, it really isn't, um, quite so straightforward, should I say. I, I apologise for that, but it, it just isn't.
No, and this will be the last comment. I just, I, I, I'm conscious that we're very good in Colchester at supporting people. You know, we, 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 we know, we've done it through refugees, we've done it through, um, people that suffered addiction um, and have become homeless and, and, you know, we, we know the great work that's been done by those various organisations such as Beacon, House, et cetera. But in being so good, we then attract more, don't we? And, and we, and we know now, we're looking at a housing list of three thousand upwards, four hundred people applying for a family home in Mile End. Uh, and yet we are building double the houses that councils have been building for years. So that, I think the word that I'm looking for here is fairness, fairness on existing residents and existing communities. That's not to say we are saying no, we're going to put up a, rebuild the Roman wall and say you can't come in. But it's about fairness to existing communities. And I, I, I think that cross party, everyone's on that same page. And somehow if we can get some policy around that, that does have discretion, but that's fair. I think that's what I'd like to see, if there's a way of doing that.
Okay, so, um, I suppose the first point, being part of Gateway to Home Choice is a real bonus for us in Colchester because, um, believe it or not, we do export an awful lot more people through the register than we do import. So, um, if you look at the, the Gateway to Home Choice, um, annual report, which is on the, on the Gateway to Home Choice website, you'll be able to see for, for yourself. Um, and the other thing as well is the council, um, properties that we're building ourselves. Um, if, if we're building properties ourselves and all our acquisitions as well, they go to Colchester households. So they're not, um, when, they are, they do go on Gateway to Home Choice, but they're for Colchester residents only. So there are some things that do happen that, you know, um, preserve, um, accommodation for people in Colchester. But you were right on your other point. We're very, very good at, uh, and sometimes that can be to our disadvantage. But not particularly in terms of Gateway to Home Choice, because that is a real benefit to us.
Can I ask whether we, we know much about the actual demand for local affiliations? It's, it's one of the nebulous things. Occasionally we meet it, someone says, isn't it unfair that my grandchild couldn't get a house near me or, or, or similar? But it, it, it isn't a concrete issue, um, that we, as managers, we can put our, our hands around and say, you know, that is, we know how to deal with, with that issue. I mean, is it, is it primarily a rural issue where, where say parents are concerned or their, their children are concerned that if they're housed elsewhere, uh, because of councillor Scordish rightly saying, we have a disgusting rural transport system in a non-existent rural, rural transport system. And if your children are next village along, uh, and you've not got a car or a decent bike, the probability of getting there on a rainy day is absolutely negligible. Whereas in the urban areas, I mean, transport is, is easier. Uh, we'd like it to be even better, but it's, it's easier. So is, is this primarily a rural issue? Or is it an urban issue? Or don't we know?
Um, for the rural sites, um, uh, the, um, the community of Essex would do, um, for any of our rural sites, they would do a housing need survey before they were, those proposals were put for, put forward. Um, so that is something that they would do when we know of a site in a rural area so that we have an idea of, um, what the demand is for that area. Um, but no, we don't have anything, well, I, we do and we don't. People, people can actually say where they want to live when they join the housing register, but some people don't. So it's not, you know, it's not something that we can, can't. And also if it's a homeless household, then, um, yeah. I mean, people, like I say, people can say where they want to live, but because it's not, um, across the piece and some people don't put their, the area that they want to or don't mind where they live, it's a bit hit and miss. So it's very difficult to, to kind of gauge exactly until there's, we do a housing need, um, assessment, which is actually something, a housing need survey, which is something that we are doing at the moment. Um, or putting in place for Greenstead, um, for that project.
And the housing needs survey by R C C E will identify the issue at a given moment in time. Um, move on a couple of years. And again, okay, when, when we, we build a new house and we've got a new house to let, okay. We, we, we know what the, the demand is likely to be in that village or in that community, uh, using our own, uh, uh, assessment tools. But three, four years down the line, it's, we've lost track of, um, of the, the affiliations of who locally wants to be in that house and the person they wanted to affiliate with has probably moved out to another person's home or, you know, gone to a job somewhere else. Uh, and it, it seems to be an issue where we're, we're trying to produce a solution, but, you know, I, I, I don't fully understand the problem. I understand the problem, but I don't understand the numerics around the problem. Is it a big problem? Or is it a, a small problem? Is it something that happens once in, once in a while? But councillors always hear and get the complaint, therefore we think it's an important problem. Whereas in the great scheme of housing, it's not so important as it appears when an irate grandma turns up on our door and, uh, and is very vocal about their, their family problems. So, you know, I, I just have this worry that we, we don't really have a grip on whether it is a problem or not.
No, I think, um, people that live in those areas and have lived there all their life sometimes can be quite precious about that. But I, I think from the council's perspective, obviously, you know, our concern is the greater housing need in Colchester, um, and sort of ensuring that we've got enough, which we haven't, affordable housing to meet the demand. So, um, yes, in the scheme of things, I think, I don't think it is as big a problem, but that's, you know.
Uh, my second question is, if, if we adopted such a policy, um, how would it actually work? Although, you know, it might well be that you don't need to think about how it works until, until the policy's been adopted. I mean, you can imagine a situation where, um, there is an apparent local affiliation. Someone wishes to be in a village because, or in a particular community in the urban area because they have relatives there. Uh, you can do anything between, say, giving them sort of half a point, push them up the scales slightly, uh, to the point where you say, well, we'll give them so many extra points, it sort of shifts them up into the next band. Um, I mean, how, how would we, can you see a fair way of doing the numerics on, on gauging how important an affiliation is? how important an affiliation is, and if there was a policy, making the appropriate correction to give them that little bit of, of extra, which might see them moving into the area where they, they, they want to go because of local affiliations?
So if someone's got a local connection to an area like that, one of the rural areas, they can specify that, and then if a property came up for that area, they would, they would get quite a high priority for that, if they lived, if, if they have a local connection or affiliation for that area, that particular area. So say for example, Layered Hill, so if somebody is on the register in band A, B and C, so one of the higher, they would have to have a high housing need, but if they're on those bands and a property comes up in that area, then obviously they would have more chance of, of getting that, if they have that area down, as, as an area that they have a local connection to, than somebody that doesn't. If there's a local connection criteria for the area, then they would, does that make sense?
What I'm not understanding is how that is done in practice, because it's, you're, you're talking about a quantised system where either they, they, they do have an affiliation, they don't have an affiliation, but in the, in the real world, there are strong affiliations and weak affiliations, and, and any system would have to be able to deal with those people who've just got a very tenuous link, you know, where, relative I've only seen in 20 years, but I went to their wedding, as opposed to a relative who are going on a daily basis and, and helping aged parents sort of prepare food and so on. So that, there has to be, it isn't just, yes, there is affiliation or no, there isn't. I would have thought, or maybe, maybe an incorrect assumption on my part, that you would need a finer degree of granularity to decide whether this is a, a local affiliation which is of importance, or a local affiliation which would be nice but is not so important, and that would need building into your, your decision-making process, rather than just saying, yes, it is local, or no, it isn't local. There's the big grey area between yes it is and no it isn't, which you'd need to take into account, otherwise you'd have appeals and, you know, but folks would be saying, we, we want to know how the system works, so that your decision has been made fairly.
Yeah, I mean, the way that obviously the criteria works is that, that we've set out in the pilot, or that it's been set out in the pilot scheme for Layered Hill. So it gives, in the paper, it states the criteria that people have to meet to be eligible for one of those properties, so that's the, that's the criteria for this. And, and also in terms of the allocations policy, you would have to live or work in the area to have that local connection. You could still request to live in an area, but if it was a local connection criteria, then you would have to meet that criteria.
I'm just convincing myself that it's, it's more difficult, it really is. Excuse my naivety on, like, councillor Lawes on, on housing matters, not our specialist area. Are there any other questions from members of the panel on, on how this might work? And of course, it's not our decision, we just have to reassure ourselves that all the options have been looked at, and whatever option is taken is a sensible option, but it's, it's not our decision. And as has been also said, there is a, there is a project running which may provide further evidence as to whether such an affiliation should be introduced and how it should be[1178.19][1178.19]introduced. So we, we've, we've asked a series of questions, I think we're beginning to understand the issue just a little more. I think the distortion to the system that is caused by having a free-for-all on affiliations, I, you know, I claim an affiliation, therefore I claim to go to the top of the list, would cause so much distortion that the system would become unmanageable. Should we wait until we see the results of this, of the pilot scheme, before, before go, before making a recommendation? My impression is that it would not be helpful at the moment to, to make a recommendation. The recommendation can be ignored because we're on this panel, but nevertheless, it's, we, we would not seem to be adding much to the overall equation at the moment by expressing any strong view on this, other than we note that there is an ongoing issue. That's a bit of a cop-out for scrutiny, but I, I, I think we can't really help, I don't see that we're going to help this particular position, perhaps we shouldn't have raised it in the first place, but at least we now know that we're asking the right questions, the, the questions are not leading in any specific direction, and the portfolio holder is hearing everything we say, so that in itself achieves a degree of success.
You know, something more helpful would be if you were to recommend that we, we cancel the right to buy, and then we might have a few extra houses available.
If you wish to put that as a work programme on, on the panel, we will consider it, but that's not the, on the schedule tonight. If there are significant findings from the pilot scheme. Have an agreed position? Thank you. The only other item which was scheduled on the work programme, which was the, the approach to the budget strategy, isn't available, so that, that leads us to the end. Oh, thank you very much for your attendance, that, that is the end of the, the issues that we're scrutinising, we now just have to look at our work programme, which because of unforeseen circumstances has been particularly light in the first half of the year, and therefore is going to be particularly onerous in the second half of the year. I make no apologies, I enjoy it, and I'm sure you all enjoy it as much as I do. So, Rob, can you just guide us through where we are on the work programme, and how we're going to, to fit it all in before the end of the civic year?
Thank you very much Chair, so as members will note on pages 39 and 40, we have specifically referencing 40 as the dates that are to come forward, that lists out what we have coming before the committee. Now, we do have the two items as agreed earlier in the meeting to work into the work programme, but also if there are any additional dates that the committee does wish to add. I have from Owen, I can just find Chair, because I believe that this has been discussed between yourself and the group spokespersons, some possible dates of the 15th of March, 21st of February or 28th of February. And so it's up to members if they wish to approve the current plan as it is, or to add any additional dates in, and other items to move or be moved around as appropriate. So I'll take committee's lead on that Chair, and answer questions as best to my ability. Thank you.
It seems an unsolvable problem at this stage, because we're not sure when the new, the additional work items are going to come forward in terms of a useful report to scrutinise. There's going to be one other item which will definitely be added, and that is scrutiny of council's response to the peer review. That's not yet been an item nine matter, but Chairman and I are being pressed to, to the committee, they may wish to do that at some stage, we'll consider that at the next meeting. And none of these, are we certain when the, when the work is going to come along? So we, we could start rescheduling the current work that's on the programme to fit in better with an extra, an extra meeting. But my guess is that the, the date for an extra meeting will really be determined by when the two additional items are, are maturing and the reports are available. So do, do we have to make a decision? I mean, is it that those three dates are going to be snuffled by other committees or will be left with nothing if we don't go for one? Or can we be pragmatic and just wait and see how the work programme develops, knowing that we're probably going to need at least one extra meeting?
I would advise Chair that on the basis that, as we don't know when those items could come before the committee, we do have three as mentioned, we could, I look over to my manager to hopefully help me with this if I do stray from the path of righteousness, would be, we can keep those dates free for now and block them out until the committee has decided, or through the group spokesperson's meeting to decide when that would want to come forward. But that can be done outside of the meeting, brought back in the work plan to the next meeting to agree that those, that an additional meeting could be put in with those items. Would that be acceptable Chair to yourself and the committee?
It's acceptable to me, it's a question of whether committee members want to leave it so late in the day to get dates in their diary, or whether diaries are sufficiently flexible to, to ensure that colleagues can attend, or substitutes can, can attend. Relaxed? Relaxed, okay, we're, we're relaxed and we're going to leave it in the capable hands of democratic services to ensure that the council resources are used in the best possible way to achieve that all committees and panels get through their work by the end of the civic year. Reasonable, yeah, thank you, yeah.
Apologies, just to come back to the peer challenge action plan, it wasn't dealt with under item nine, but we were thinking that if the scrutiny panel wishes to kind of add some value to it in the, the process of it being agreed, the earlier it comes here, the better. We've received the report now, you would have seen that published early this week, the plan is being developed, and we do believe it will be ready for your discernment, if you were so minded to add it to the work programme, excepting it wasn't dealt with under item nine, so we need to think from a government's perspective how to effectively get it onto the, the work programme. Thank you.
So two of the new work items may well end up in December, so probably indicating that we will need a meeting in January time to, to deal with the overflow. But can we leave it flexible? It was, it was good to be reminded that. Can I ask a question, will we be scrutinising the report from the, the peer review panel, or will be scrutinising Cabinet or the leader's immediate reaction in terms of what he's going to do in the light of it? It's slightly different.
Yeah, I think it's the, it's the latter, the, the kind of peer, peer review report, it kind of is what it is, it's been, it's been done through a kind of normal process, it's done with every other council in the land, it's kind of how we respond to it as a council, so it is the latter. As I say, work is underway on the action plan to the eight key recommendations, and the panel, I guess, need to reassure themselves about the adequacy of the response, the time scales concern, and we talked tonight about one of the key findings around the capital programme as an example, so it is looking at the action plan and the response.
Okay, we remain flexible but think January is a more likely date. Is there anything else before we close the meeting? Well, thank you for your attendance this evening, notably shorter than yesterday's meeting. Thank you.